Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Delafield Common Council Meeting for February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, coming to order at seven P. M. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, Molly, roll call, please.
Elder Person Henry, here. Elder Person Schaefer.
Here.
Elder Person Valdi, here. Elder Person Wilkin.
Here.
Elder Person Price.
Oh, Elder Person Berg.
Here.
That means Elder Person Price and Elder Person Grimmer are excused. Mayor Iker.
Present.
And Administrator Hafner is also excused tonight.
All right. Hopefully, there's someplace warmer. Item number four, minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, or regular meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of January twentieth, regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions. Okay, minutes from January twentieth are passed. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from our February fourth special meeting.
I'll move to.
Oh, I'm gonna give it to Berg.
Berg, is there a second?
Dirk, I'll second.
Schaefer with a second. Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions. Okay, minutes from February fifth, our fourth special meeting are approved. Item five, City of Delafield Citizens' Comments. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to anything on or off the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Item six, Consent Agenda. Two items on the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, Consent Agenda items are passed. So if you're here for anything to do with the easements for Carriage Hills, you're free to leave, or you can stay if you'd like. Item seven, Boards, Commissions, Committee Reports. Seven A licenses. Is there any licenses, Molly?
No licenses.
Okay. Plan Commission, there's two items. Alderman Grimmer is not here. He had notified us earlier he was going to be absent due to an illness. There's two items here. One is, and I was present at these meetings, one is item B one A regarding Elm Brook Church. Michael Jones looking for a Conditional Use Amendment Site Plan Appearance Approval to Allow the Construction of an Outdoor Playground and Relocation of a Tent Used for Summer Camps. This was unanimously approved by the Plan Commission on January twenty-ninth. Are you the applicant for that? Or no? Yeah. So the applicants here, if there's any questions, I don't know if there is, or if someone would like to make a motion to approve what the Plan Commission recommended?
I move to approve the recommendation by the Plan Commission for.
Second.
Elm Brook Church Playground Site Plan.
Okay, and this is really, and I'm sure the applicant will concur, they've had something similar in the past, and this is just something as a expand or move it, it's gone without incident in the past, so appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Thanks for coming, appreciate it. Motion has been passed for the Site Plan and Appearance Approval and Update for the Conditional Use. Item seven B one, or seven B I B, three thirty-three North Lappam Peak, American Legion. This is another item that was approved unanimously by the Plan Commission, recommended to the council for approval as well. This is for a construction of a storage building close to, on the north side of the property, but there's plenty of screening provided by the new development that's going in for Delafield Parkway, and this is to bring lots of equipment that, or just miscellaneous equipment that's typically stored or laid outside, brought inside, and it's a tasteful building that matches the existing building, so I don't know if there's a, anyways, it was unanimously approved by the Plan Commission. Someone would like to approve, make a recommendation to approve this as well?
I shall move. Second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, American Legion can build their storage building. All right, seven C, Lake Welfare Committee. Elder Person Price is here. I don't know that there was a meeting in the interim between our last meeting, but since he's not here, we'll defer to the next meeting in two weeks. Park and Recreation Commission.
Park and Rec completed and approved six more chapters of their five-year long-range plan. It's not finished yet, but making good progress.
How many chapters are there?
There are twelve for the parks, and then there's a goals and summary and strategy analysis section. So there's about four more chapters, twelve done, four to go.
All right. Good deal. We'll keep after it. We appreciate the work. Public Works Committee.
Yes, we met on February fifth, had a number of things we considered, including the Street Improvement Plan for two thousand and twenty-five, the Genesee Street Path Extension that's been before the city council, and we also reviewed the eight oh five Wells Street condo proposed development. All of those are still in works, and so I'll probably bring some things to the council next month.
All right, great. So Delhart Commission, I have the honor of saying something I've said before. Unfortunately, we've had a recurrence of an instance of something that is unforeseen, unscheduled maintenance, which is dealing with the terms rags, which are these, quote, flushable wipes. We've got several hundred thousand dollar unforeseen maintenance issue that came up because of an enormous amount of these that are showing up and clogging up the digesters. It's not something that, you know, typically, maintenance comes up periodically, and this is scheduled out about two years, but it was advanced because it causes issues. So if it says flushable, it isn't. All these different things like baby wipes and these other things. So I'm just doing a public service notice here. We're gonna bring it out in our newsletter as well. I saw it in the newspaper, the Wachshau-Freeman had it on behalf of Wachshau's treatment system as well. But I remember Michelle Dio, our former mayor, kind of winced when I mentioned it before in a report a while back, but if it doesn't come out of you, or it's not toilet paper, don't flush it, because it creates problems. Floss, hair, all this other stuff creates a big problem for the Delhart Water Treatment Facilities. This goes across the board nationwide, it's a national thing, but so we had to shut down one of the digesters, and we had all these issues because of those types of things. So anyway, so that's my public service announcement. There wasn't a meeting, this just came up in between our meetings. We've got our next meeting next month. But so you'll look for more fun information on that. I'll actually have Rob come in and give a summary of what this all costs, so we can highlight it more, but we're all paying for it in our dues and fees, so keep that in mind. I feel like a parent scolding people, but I wouldn't, you don't know it if you don't hear it. So Police Commission, Elder Person Valdi.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. Library Board.
We are meeting tomorrow in the library room, the public room in the back, so if, but we have not had a meeting since last meeting.
Okay. And for what it's worth, I talked with Stephanie late, mid-last summer, and suggested that we have a field trip for the council people sometime and go through, if we haven't individually, and just ask questions. And she's scheduling something for, I think, our second meeting in April, to invite people in and kind of have a precursor as opposed to just the director's reports and budget items. So she was real receptive to that, and so she's gonna take us through and show us what's new. So that's coming up. Let's see, Zoning Board of Appeals.
No meeting, no report.
All right. Promotional and Tourism Commission.
I don't have a meeting to report on, but we do have our new director who started today. I'd like to welcome Jory Hartwick to our team, and I'm very excited. She's under training for the next couple of weeks with Deb Smith, so the dynamic duo are doing their thing, and if you get a chance, stop in and say hello and wish Deb well.
Have her come in and tell us all the good things she's gonna do sometime.
Yeah, she's, I'm very excited.
Okay, good. All right, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board. Alderman Grimmer's not here, but I believe there is a meeting this week. Wednesday, Wednesday.
At the Wells Fire Department.
Okay. Dear Management Committee.
No meeting, no report. Next meeting will be next month.
All right. Other Committees, Commissions, and Boards, none. Unfinished business. There is no unfinished business to report. Mayor's Report. So I've got a couple of things I'll mention before that. First of all, it's sad to report, and many of you probably know, Rush, Ross Wan Schneider, longtime resident, passed away about ten days ago. His father was the first mayor of the city of Delafield. It's quite an interesting story, if you ever want to dig into it, about how and why we broke away from the town back in nineteen, oh, about sixty-five years ago. But he was our first mayor, and Ross and his wife Chloe were great stewards for defending all that is Delafield and the history and why we are who we are, and that legacy is gonna continue, and Ross laid some, and his father laid some a firm foundation for why we should be resistant to certain things about, that we should not change about the city of Delafield. And so that's gonna continue on, so keep, just keep him and Chloe in your prayers.
If I can just interrupt.
Yes, please.
There will be a celebration of Ross's life in, right around the start of baseball season, because as you know, he coached state championship baseball team in Nina back in the seventies, and he is just, I'm gonna miss. He walked the neighborhoods with me and just schooled me on the history of the city and told a lot of great stories. So yeah, more than just a neighbor to me, that's for sure. But there will be a celebration of life, and we will be probably doing it at the Fish Hatchery. So folks want to come and share some memories, it would be great, and I'll update you on that.
Yeah, please, please, we'll get it on the website. Yeah, I've been praised and scolded by him appropriately over the years, so. So also, in keeping with tradition and that, those of you didn't attend, the Coon Feed was January twenty-fifth. It was the ninety-eighth annual, so just keep that in mind. So in two years, if you haven't been there, it's gonna be the hundredth. It's coming up, so you've got to go. But it's a success, I understand. And also, the Chamber of Commerce had their annual awards ceremony at the Rustic Manor, and I was privileged to go there and see local businesses and that. It's a nice thing for them to get together and praise each other and award each other for their cooperation in the businesses that they have, and I'm sure you can go on their site and look to see who the winners were, but it's all businesses you know, and continue to patronize them. So one item I have here is, this wasn't meant to be earth-shattering, but it's an update regarding the St. John's Pier Project, and it's not that there's pilings going in. This is just simply to state that, as you know, that there was a contested litigation between an interested group and the DNR regarding the permit that was issued to the city, and the city did prevail, or I should say, the DNR did prevail in the fact that the permit was deemed legitimate and upheld. And so, given that, and there's some findings about recommendations from the judge that oversaw it about certain things that would be appropriate if the city went forward with it. So my intent is to continue the effort to get more public input on it and allow, and make sure that it appears on the Park and Rec Committee's agenda in the upcoming meetings, as well as Lake Welfare, to get their input as far as what was, was or was not slated as appropriate regulations, hours, terms, you know, things that were appropriate for, if it were to go in, how it would be managed and sustained a long time, and what would be in the best interest of the community. And also, because it is something that was considered based on DNR matching funds and that, it wouldn't be something we could do this year, because we wouldn't just, I don't think we'd be conducive to saying, let's just spend a bunch of money on it. on it. So I'm going to look, have the staff look at what current cost would be, and just bring this back as a budget item by the end of the year, because it was something that had a decent amount of public interest and a decent amount of public... Yeah, it just, it was, it was whatever. It was debated in public, and it was very close. And I just want to make sure that if we go forward with it, we all have all our facts, and we understand what we'll be getting into. But the riparian rights of the city were upheld by the judge's ruling, and that there's a right to have a pier there, and it's, anyways, it'll be coming forward, and I'm just going to put it through lots of opportunities for the public to weigh in. So when we see it in August, October, we'll know what we're talking about. So that's the purpose of this update. It's just to state that we're going to have more information and lots of public input. Also, okay, so next, we've got some anniversaries coming up that are worth noting for public employees. Lynn Hughes, our police department clerk, has been here seventeen years as of this month. Officer Dan Barber in Police Department's been here eleven years. Officer Joseph Matheson, Police Department's been here eight years. And our library director, Stephanie, has been here for nine years. So when you see them, thank them for their longstanding support and service. That's all I have for the mayor's report. New business discussion and action regarding approval of vouchers for January, what is this? January, December, and August?
I move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
Any discussion on the voucher list? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? All right, we'll pay our bills. Report of city officials, city administrators not here. I'm sure he'll have one in two weeks. City clerk, I think you've got one or two things?
I do. So the first is the request for proposal for the classification and compensation study. The updates that the Common Council had requested in December were incorporated into that final RFP. Administrator Hafner did complete his review, and the final RFP was posted in the beginning of February. The review was delayed a little bit due to Administrator Hafner's workload, and in order to stay on the timeline, it was determined that we would go ahead and post it in the beginning of February. If there are any questions, concerns about what was sent out, please address those, and we will see if we can fix that. But I didn't get any additional feedback after December, so we just kind of proceeded based on that and wanting to get it out in time. We do have to have the the timeline in order to complete the compensation study prior to the budgetary cycle. We really were trying to not delay it further. So any questions on what went out? It was included in the packet, if anybody... Okay. The other thing is, as you've noticed in here this evening, we are set up for an election tomorrow. I do not expect it to be busy. We only had a hundred and fifty or so absentees returned. The next election is going to be April first. On that election, again, we'll see the Aldermanic seats, the school district seats, and then some other regional and state races. Any questions about the election?
And so is there anything other than state superintendent primary and school board primary on there?
There are no school board primaries on this. It's just the state superintendent. That's the one race.
It's one race?
One race.
Those interested in superintendent?
Yep. That's all.
All right. City Treasures, oh, I will back up for the city administrator report since he's not here. He turned a year older last week, so when you see him when he comes back, wish him a happy belated birthday, and that he's now older. So, all right, City Treasures report, see the packet. Is there any council requests for future agenda items tonight? As always, if anything comes up, please reach out to me, Tom, Molly, or whoever you think will get the message to us. All right, with that, see correspondence in the packet, and seeing no other items, the meeting is now adjourned at seven nineteen. Thank you very much.